Forty-five, I'd like to call for tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty nineteen. We're at the high school auditorium after being relocated from MAPS Central Administration Building for Fire Code from the Merrill Fire Department. Thank you for your attendance. I'd like to call tonight's meeting for order, Tammy. The roll call.
Lyda Yinklin, here. Bob Fashco.
Here.
Paul Drew.
Here.
Brad Waller.
Here.
Jeremy Radler.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Kristy Pauling. Here. Maria Malti, here. Lynn, Kevin Lake.
Here. Please join me in standing as you're able to repulse the meeting. I thought the meeting was still alive in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Bay Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. The first item on our agenda is public comments to the board. Just a couple of quick notes. The board allocates fifteen minutes at the beginning of each regular meeting for members of the public to speak. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to address the board. We do have a large group, please designate one representative to speak. Board members may ask clarifying questions only during the comments section and we'll postpone further discussion into our action until further public input. We appreciate your participation in the school board meeting. This evening, the public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person and if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you made this evening. We have been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute privilege which protects mandatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker faces a personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period of the school board meeting is the mandatory standards or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. With that in mind, we do have seven people that have requested time to speak. That will be just around two minutes per person. We can do that in an orderly fashion. I will remind the person to come to the microphone and they can state their name. And then I will tell you as that person is coming up who is next up in line so they are aware and then I will introduce you when you get to the microphone as well as you can introduce yourself. So, starting off this evening with the first public comment is John Stern. John, if you'll come to the microphone and go through your topic.
I'm on the microphone, actually. Thank you. Start. My name's John Stern. Many of you know me as former town chairman of Hamburg. I was also one of the original Maple Grove Governance Board and I have served on the Fromm Scholarship Committee for many, many years. That said, I know you're considering closing Maple Grove, but I think we, as a Hamburg community and Merrill School Board, have to come to some compromise what's sensible for budget and what's in the best interest of the children that go to Maple Grove. Now, with that, if Maple Grove is closed, I believe that you are going to lose some substantial enrollment, which is going to adversely affect your budget because your budget is based on enrollment. The town of Hamburg and, well, the residents here and I'm speaking to them as much as I am to the board, may petition for detachment from the Merrill School District if that school is closed. The other aspect is that the school itself may not be able to be sold by the district. There are documents on file at the Marathon County Courthouse that stipulates what may happen to the building. And I see a head nodding there that you're aware of that. So, I'm just hoping that we can at least come to some compromise where the school may stay open. It's probably in the best interest of all concerned. But, you know, you have to do your action as you see fit and we do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our time of talk will come from Peter Fromm-Way.
I come to you tonight, I want to thank you, Board, for having us here and allowing us to be in this large room. I represent the Nieman and Fromm family. Jacob Nieman, along with other settlers, started that school across the road in eighteen seventy. This school is essential to that community for its furtherance economically and socially. This school is an advantage for this school system and that is exactly what my grandfather, Edward Fromm, president of your school board, knew and illustrated to this school district. I would like to know how this board is going to justify cutting off scholarships for college and technical students, well-deserving rural students, by closing Maple Grove School, which is legally tied to the Walter Maple Fromm Scholarship. You will essentially cut it off. This is a perpetual fund that I estimate to be three and a half million dollars, already awarding well over six million dollars. Your actions, you, your decisions, will perpetuate the cutting off that. In addition, you will lose the property and its assets. I advise you to take advantage of the school and make it work for you, which it has done in the past. Thank you.
Next, our comment will be from Stevie Claxton. Next up after Stevie will be Dr. Angie Servie.
My name is Stevie Claxton. I'm the current vice president of the Maple Grove Governance Board. I'm also the mother to a current Maple Grove third grader as well as Maple Grove alum in the seventh and eleventh grade. Undoubtedly, you know the history and the emotional connections that many of us have to that Little Red School House, but what you may not know is that school harbors much more than history-rich education. Typically, parents are not prepared to enter the world of special education or IEP with their child. Yet, when our middle son was in the first grade at Maple Grove, that's exactly our reality. The school staff provides exceptional support to our student and to our family during a time that was filled with unknowns. While a student at Maple Grove, he was supported both educationally and emotionally throughout the entire IEP initiation process and beyond his fifth grade graduation. He received not only small classroom-sized education, but also two-to-one or one-on-one instruction where he needed it. This not only helped him make significant gains, but also made his deficits much less noticeable to his peers, which was something he struggled with. My child was held accountable and responsible for all aspects of his learning utilizing character traits all Maple Grove students are held to high standards on. Those character traits are known to students as being crisp, craftsmanship, respect, integrity, stewardship, and perseverance. The project-based curriculum offered at Maple Grove gave our family an option in the district's other than traditional learning, traditional classroom learning. This hands-on learning was exactly the kind of instruction a child like our son needed to be a successful learner. Transplanting my child in an overcrowded classroom with twenty-five-plus students and giving him simple instruction and an iPad than expecting him to be a well-educated individual is not realistic. In reality, there are many other children within our district just like my son who could tremendously benefit from learning environment that is provided at Maple Grove. These are the children that will likely never see a four-point or grade point average and while the Fromm Scholarship is certainly very nice, not all students are capable of obtaining that. The educational foundation that Maple Grove provides those children gets them off their right foot, prepping them for a future in technical school, trade school, or just being a well-rounded future employee. Because of that educational foundation paired along with the crisp character traits is the exact reason why our son was told to them as a student of the quarter along with four other Maple Grove students in his very first semester at middle school. In closing, as a parent for the child that needs additional support, I ask you to think about that population of students when making your decision about our future. All students deserve to receive a great education. Their education should not be compromised by administrative costs or spending. I'd like to leave you with this, which was taken from the Hapken Project-Based Learning by Ross Cooper and Erin Murphy. Students in a project-based classroom fueled by inquiry will be defined by the perseverance, creativity, problem-solving abilities, collaborative skills, and willingness to ask questions that lead to meaningful change. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, Stevie. Next, for Dr. Angie Servie, followed by Trina Lutske.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Angie Servie. I'm speaking on behalf of the Maple Grove Governance Board as its president. Tonight, I have my son Joe with me. He's in the fourth grade at Maple Grove. Tonight, we come to you on behalf of parents of Maple Grove students and parents ourselves. We understand that you are seeking to make the best decisions and I hope that our comments can enlighten you to that. Administration cites the ability to reallocate four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars as a result of closing Maple Grove. The cost of students leaving the MAPS School District would be approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars per year in per pupil revenue as John Stern alluded to. This brings the money available for reallocation only to thirty thousand dollars. That is not going to fix the budget problem. Although it may seem like an easy solution, closing Maple Grove comes with many unintended consequences. The students remaining in the district will be coming into in-town schools, driving up class sizes, and layoffs will occur, although may not be the Maple Grove staff. Maple Grove has had steady enrollments since two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seeing no decrease in the last five years. Enrollment at the other elementary schools in Merrill ranged from four percent to twenty-two percent from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen. Maple Grove also has a solid score on the Accountability Report Card, with a four-year average higher than all other Merrill Elementary Schools. That is in light of change in principal over the last four years, change in faculty, threat to be closed by Merrill twice, and limited to four teachers serving sixth grades. Even with that, we continue to excel. MAPS has a contract in place with our Governance Board for the charter school through the end of June two thousand twenty-two. Tonight, you're going to be asked to move the motion forward to vote on closing Maple Grove School, but I want to tell you that we do have a lawyer representing our Maple Grove Governance Board. He has examined the contract. He has prepared a statement. I will give you the handout tonight, but in there he quotes, "There is no lawful basis upon which the district may laterally terminate the charter contract without the consent of the Maple Grove Governance Board." Thank you for your time.
Next, for Trina Lutske, followed by Melissa Yates.
My name is Trina Lutske and I want to speak to the board from the perspective of a non-mate of Merrill citizen. I was an educator for over ten years and a few of those years being with the district. I'm not from the area, but my husband is a Merrill High School alumni. Even though our family had some history here, which is what brought us back to the area after living out of state for about ten years, this district was given a clean slate as far as I was concerned, not only from my perspective on if I wanted to seek employment here, but on where I would end up spending our oldest and only at the time because she was not yet school age. When information regarding kindergarten enrollment began coming, we had our second chat already, and I began to research options in the district. And I will say that as I searched what was available, I was surprised that when I began mentioning Maple Grove, I would hear things from family members, friends, or community members that told me, "Oh, they're closed. You can't go there because you don't live out there. It costs money to go there." Now, if I was anyone other than me, I would have accepted this information from longstanding community members and just enrolled my student into the in-town school as decided by my address, but I wanted to make sure I was informed. So, I did more research, privately scheduled a tour, and chose Maple Grove for its outstanding opportunities that only a one-of-a-kind Little Red School House in rural Wisconsin could offer. I heard about the tapping of maple syrup and composting and saw the chickens being hatched in the hallway as well as hearing the cluck from the hen house outside. Now, being a city girl from Minneapolis, you would have never thought that that was one of the deciding factors for me, but as an educator, I thought exactly what those opportunities would mean for my students' experiences. She would learn through hands-on curriculum that allowed students to explore and become more than what our data-driven test scores can force us to be. Now, I understand the purpose and reasons for test scores and having a universal measuring stick to a BI five, but what I would ask the board tonight to consider is what measuring stick is being used by potential community members who look to unique offerings available for their family before they consider where to be employed or where to live? We handpicked Maple Grove and were grateful that the Merrill School District had a charter option to allow for families who would likely not look to the traditional educational opportunities to service their students. I know of families that specifically chose to move to Merrill based on their children attending Maple Grove. They looked at the schools before they even looked at houses. So, I would respectfully ask that the board consider that if the problem is indeed, in fact, declining enrollment as a whole, how would closing the most unique educational opportunity the district has prove to be a solid solution to this problem? There must be other ways because the truth is, those as myself that stop this educational setup will seek elsewhere if there's no longer option. If you want to keep enrollment you have, honoring the contract the district has with Maple Grove as a charter is in the district's best interest.
Next, we have Melissa Yates, followed by Eric Polo.
Hi. My name is Melissa Yates. I'm the mother of three in the district and living in Pine River where we choose to make the choice for my fourth-grade daughter to attend Maple Grove. I understand the current budgetary situation and feel that this idea of closure of Maple Grove is not the solution to the problem. The district needs to look at other options to reduce costs. Has there been previous public discussion on the potential closure of this school? Having a charter school is an asset to the district. A charter school gives the families that are given options of education and is a selling point for our district. Is the district marketing the fact that we have a charter school? Who is marketing our district? School board members. Have you visited all the elementary schools unannounced, to speak for yourself? What is the average class size for elementary schools in Merrill School District? If this school is closed, what is the anticipated average class size next year? Because it is a smaller school, kids really are getting personal learning time and not shuffled among many like at larger schools. I think all Merrill Elementary Schools are great, but there is a significant difference in the atmosphere at Maple Grove than any other school. I'm happy now that the district moved Ms. Schultz because that pushed us to send her daughter there where she has blossomed with confidence. I would like to thank you, school board members, for your service and to look at the broader picture of potential budget savings that may include analysis of different administration costs. I'm part of the district that discussed this funding gap, but it is not productive to discuss closure of Maple Grove. Rather, we need to discuss other options that have less impact on student outcomes. Thank you.
Next, and our final person to turn in their public comment form is Eric Polo.
Hi. I'm Eric Polo. My name is Eric Polo, father of two boys in Maple Grove, dairy farmer just down the road from Maple Grove. We've hosted multiple tours and always open to the kids from Maple Grove. I'm also a volunteer at Hamburg. As chairman of Hamburg, I sit on the Walter Fromm Scholarship Committee and I want you guys to know that Hamburg will do its best to ensure that scholarship stays with kids at Maple Grove and will do our best to keep Maple Grove going in the community as long as we have your support and hopefully you'll give that support to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. Next, item on our agenda this evening is recognition. I'd like to start off by the board recognizing Elizabeth Schmidt for qualifying as a state cross-country runner. Is Elizabeth able to attend this evening? Congratulations. Following individuals applying for and received beyond crayons and computer grants. Sherry Schultz, bottom line, A.D., two-year-old. Jason Lutsinsky, Lynn Kirk, Chris Krueg, Aaron Bailey, Kevin Keith, me, Megan Sherman, Kelly Wallace, Terry Cox, Amy Drew, Emily Smith, Robin Hanson, Lisa Hamlin, Terry Ekis, Tiffany Booker, Boo Hager, Steve White, and Olivia Dock. While I don't have individual certifications or certificates this evening, I would like to recognize those that are here in attendance and recognize you from the board. If you could come up for a vote, we would appreciate that. In times of working with the budgets, applying for grants, let alone receiving grant funds is essential and much appreciated. Appreciate you guys relocating to be recognized this evening. Thank you. At this time on our agenda, I'm going to turn it over to our Student Board of Education representatives, Levi Black and Vala Troyer, for going through our high school activities.
So, Merrill High School had their recognition assembly last Friday. The students acted very respectfully and got to hear from retired Merrill teacher veteran Craig Hoffman and Emile Amon, the winner of this year's Voice of Democracy essay contest. The band choir also performed patriotic music and did very well. Fall sports have come to an end and on November second, Elizabeth Schmidt went to the state cross-country meet Wisconsin Rapids and placed thirty-seventh in the state. Winter sports are already starting up. Girls' basketball had their first game yesterday. Boys' basketball started practice on Monday and this week they have practiced before and after school. Michael Kasper signed his letter of intent to play for the Virginia basketball team last night. And wrestling also started practice on Monday. Lots of school clubs are fully up and running. Junior Optimists, National Honor Society, and NS Committee, for example, have lots of volunteer opportunities coming up as we enter the holiday season. Junior Optimists will have their third meeting on Thursday and we've had a group that participated in Make a Difference Day on November second. Merrill Social Norm Club is a group of students who decide what topics to focus on, what facts from the social norms survey should be used on posters and billboards, and how to reach out to their peers and they inserted their group ticket.
On Thursday of this week, during flex, all of the juniors will be receiving their pre-ACT scores. This will allow students time before the real ACT in March to prepare in the different areas of the test. Students will be able to prepare in the areas of math, science, English, and reading. Next week, on Thursday, is Thanksgiving and to celebrate, the students will be able to take the week off of school. Many students plan on going hunting and traveling to visit family and this will be a time to finish off the month. This year, our poll placed title was Disorder in the Court. The play was about a wacky court hearing where it becomes evident the only, only the innocent defender is the same, the only same person in town. It was a comedic success with students in the community. Our string musical has also been announced. It's going to be The Music Man and auditions for the musical will start on December tenth. It will be performed early in April and there will be lots of opportunities for our students to participate.
Excellent. Thank you, Vala, Levi, our board reps. Any Board of Education members have any questions they'd like answered from our student board reps at this time? That kind of quality report, I didn't think there would be any, so thank you guys. Awesome. Next on our agenda this evening is administrative reports. At this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Sample.
First report comes from the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Glenda Ojenski, and she's outlining some of the season nine trainings that we recently received. You know, we're doing a very deep dive into reading and so this last training covered the Merrill and reading standards and alignment. Everybody that participated was very engaged and it was much-needed. Also from Glenda is the progress monitoring report at the CTP committee and I appreciate the majority of the board members attending, whether you were part of that committee or not. That's when we went through the current status of our student achievement at each one of our buildings and the work that we need to do. Further in the meeting, we'll talk just briefly about our state report cards and while there was some celebrations, there's still an awful lot of work to do, so I don't want, I don't want to be downhearted about our state report card. We're very pleased with our direction, but we also have a long way to go. And so, I think everybody at the CTP committee, I thank all the building principals, I thank board members in attendance for being there. It's a, it's a very important topic when we talk about student achievement and I think we're all on board that we need to make some improvements in that area. Next on our report is the monthly data from Jill Seaman. So, you see the Pine River School for Young Learners monthly report. That's a standing report each month at each board meeting and you can see the status that she's made and that all of our staff at Pine River School have made for this past Following that report, we've got a report from Karen Baker, our Director of Special Edict Pupil Services. She gives the MAPS breakdown. Now that we're into the school year and the Northern Achievement Center has been taken over by MAPS, you can see some very important information there. If you look, MAC is a program that services our own students with some severe emotional behavioral disabilities and we're also open to outside schools. They pay full-year tuition, any student outside of our district, of twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the year. You can see the quarterly tuition is seven thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars or it comes down to a single day of a hundred and seventy dollars. Currently, we have in the lower program, the downstairs program, I should say, for the younger students, K-five, we have four of our own students, three out of the district students. In the upper program, we've got seven of our own students, first grade six through twelve, and six out of district students. When you look at the, the actual cost, while it was staffing costs were projected to be three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for that program, that's two teachers and four instructional aides, the actual cost came in at three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand three-hundred-and-sixty dollars for the staff there. Approximately two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars has been received for out-of-district costs. So, our four students and our seven students respectively in the other program So our four students and our seven students respectively in the younger program and the older program each have access to one teacher and two aides at a combined cost of approximately fifty thousand dollars, the rest of that being offset by out-of-district tuition. If we were to flip that, if these eleven students were attending MAC and MAC were outside of the district, the cost would be approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars with no chance of offsetting that cost. And so we're very happy to have that program in our district. Any questions on that? I know that that was a board member's topic that we could find the answer tonight, talking about the cost of bringing that in-house. The next report is a very extensive report from Eddie Den, our Director of Human Resources. Some of these topics are still being addressed and will be addressed very shortly at the next committee meeting or even the next board meeting. We've given out, we've provided MAPS turnover data. Also, we're working through the employee anti-harassment and FMI policy revisions. We're confident that after next month, we will have prepared recommendations for the full board regarding those two heavy topics. HR personnel report has been updated. You'll see lots of coaches and academic co-curricular hires on this report as they are employees of the district, and so you'll continue to see those positions as well in personnel report. We've made some great strides with the athletic evaluation process as far as Eddie working with our activities director, John Miller, and providing not only self-evaluations, but evaluations to be done by John Miller himself. And so that leaves us with every single employee in this district being evaluated. We'll be talking a little bit more this evening about non-renewal and the philosophy discussion, so that will be later at the end of open session. And then he talks about technology used by staff. When you're talking about policies specifically seventy-five thirty point oh-two, and that's using a personal communication device to either videotape or photograph or audio record a student. The guidelines, the guidelines, the requirements are very tight when it comes to that, and it can be used for instructional purposes and outside of those purposes. And so that is an area that we've been sharing with all of our buildings. They're hearing that message consistently because we do have apps that require us, that allow us to videotape students. We certainly have student recognition, but we need to make sure that those guidelines are being followed and they stay within the guidelines of policy. The resignation and retiree trend data that was shared at a past committee meeting, that's available for you this evening too. It's a pretty all-inclusive report. Eddie did a nice job of providing description for each one of the graphs that you see, and that goes back to comparable data from all the way back to two thousand eleven and twelve. Any questions that are on the data that Eddie provided there? Food participation update is there. One of the takeaways that you can see by the participation report is that we are still in the black, we are not in the red. For that, we're thankful. That hasn't always been the case. You know, you also are aware that school lunch prices have not increased. I think we can all be very, very proud of that, that we, that we not had to increase. But then you can also see with our profit-loss history that our profit is slowly getting down there. So I anticipate that we'll probably be at least looking very hard at these numbers in the future. I don't think we're ready yet, but we're getting close. You can also see a very positive fund balance history with our food service program. Really appreciate the partnership that we have and the contract that we have with Tawker. They're doing some wonderful things, and you can also see the board bikes for the month of October. It's, it's kind of their newsletter and what they've been involved with. It says more than just the numbers, the free use, but how they truly embrace our schools and we embrace their service. Brian Dasher provided his monthly status report. Brian is available if you have any questions. Any questions from the board at this time regarding this monthly report? Kesha is not present. I know that she notified board members in advance. She has a very lengthy report as well. Lots of great things going on from the technology scorecard that is utilized and visited with Kesha and her department. She outlined some of the yearly tech professional development that her staff has attended, as well as the professional development that she has able, been able to attend in October. Coding and coding collaboration is very, very strong. We've got our students from kindergarten through twelfth grade now fully invented in the coding process, learning some great things. They're, they amaze me frankly at what they're able to do. And then of course Kesha's department, anytime you implement anything new, such as this case, FastBridge is a progress monitoring tool and form of assessments. That is a, a required technology. And so I, I think we got off while it was a later start than we anticipated, not any fault of our own. Once we were handed over the program, I think it was a pretty seamless transition to get it in our students' hands and start collecting data. So that wraps up Kesha's report from technology. I provided the summary sheet, which is very similar to what you've seen if you saw the photo images this morning. This report to the board, this topic summary includes just one more chart at the bottom. It has a special strike to Bridges Virtual Academy. I broke down each school, and it's real important to note that between our schools in the district too, the state weights us in different areas. There are four areas that we're being evaluated on. That's student achievement, school growth, closing the gaps, for example, regular ed versus students with disabilities, and then post-secondary readiness. And so even with Jefferson, like I said, there's a lot to be proud of here. I'm proud of the direction that we're going. Jefferson skipped one entire step from fifty-one point four, which is failing to meet expectations, and right to meets expectations. And so their growth was tremendous when you're talking about from one year to the next. And this growth typically takes place in slow increments. Cape Goodridge Elementary came in with an eighty, two point nine one tenth of a point away from the next category, the highest category significantly, it exceeds expectations. So there it exceeds expectations. One thing I do want to point out too, with this weightedness, when you look at the student achievement, we have Washington achieving higher than anybody in the district. However, they came in as only meets expectations with sixty-seven point one. That's the weightedness that I was talking about. The student achievement for Washington exceeded the state average last year and this year. However, their priority weight that was placed on them was only fifteen percent of those four areas. Only student achievement was only weighted fifteen point seven percent of their total score. Whereas other buildings, you can see that student achievement was weighted more or less than that. And so we know what that means. That means that when the state assigns those weighted scores, that Washington has work to do in closing gaps and school growth. Rounding out, our, our state report cards is Bridges Virtual Academy. Very proud to say that for the third year in a row, they've exceeded all other K-12 virtual schools in the state by scoring eighty-two point seven on their school report card, or sorry, state report card data. They also compared very favorably to all K-12s that are of like size, that are not virtual. I believe they came in top ten even with that, and so very proud of the consistency that Bridges Virtual Academy maintains. Any questions that are regarding the state report cards for our buildings and our district? And lastly, the superintendent's report. You can see the activities that we're involved with. Of course, the district scorecard stays front and center each and every month, as well as our committee meetings. Some of the activities that I focused on was the EFW Patriots Pen and the Voice of Democracy judging. I was asked to be a judge again this year. I believe it's my fourth year doing that. All students, all the essays for the Patriots Pen, as well as the audio recordings of the Voice of Democracy. We listen to those, we read those, we score them accordingly. We do not know who the participants are, who the contestants are, until the period ends. So I was very pleased when Prairie River Middle Schools' home Dakota Brown took first place and Maddox Lannard King took third place. There were ten places awarded, and the middle school took first and third place in the essay contest. Voices of Democracy, Camille Amet took first place for Voice of Democracy, and Mies Marancheck took second place. So very good showing by our Maryland students. I was invited to be a part of a panel discussion for the WISC AD class, which is an administrative certification program. They certify teachers. This portion that I was a part of the panel certifies administrators. And so it's always good to give back and to, to help where I can at least with those incoming future administrators as they achieve their certification. Can't say enough about the Veterans Day assemblies all the way around. I made it to all but one. They were fantastic. Our students and our staff and our building administrators, and the respect that BMW has did a fantastic job honoring our veterans. I was, I was very, very proud of all of our ceremonies. The calendar survey results are out. You can see what the parent results are. And in summary, the parents and the staff had a lot of things in common. They were a little bit different surveys with the staff. We went a little bit more into detail regarding grading time and time off for parent-teacher conferences, whether that's valued or not. Both surveys, the parents and the staff favored adding an additional thirty minutes. It does not have to be thirty minutes. As I said in the survey, this is measuring the tolerance of adding minutes. So would you rather remain status quo with our minutes? And, and possibly the first day, the first day would be September third, last day would go into June, June tenth as normal. Or by adding thirty minutes, those minutes add up quickly. We're required a certain number of DPI instructional minutes by law. We cannot start school prior to September one either. And so this is really the only control we have over, over our calendar. With our student achievement being what it is, I'm selfishly representing many people who feel we need more minutes of instruction in our classrooms. We need more time to work with our students. So very pleased that, that they favored adding minutes. They did not, neither group, favor a full week off for Thanksgiving, so I apologize to our students. This will be the last time you see that. But with the parent excuse, you can still go hunting over. Should spring break be eliminated? I know it sounds silly, but I had to ask the question. No, spring break should not be eliminated. Interesting data that I received when we're, if we keep spring break, which we will, should be aligned to area school districts. And for yes was thirty-seven percent, for example, no was nineteen percent. Or when you take the no's and the nAs that it really doesn't apply to them, those kind of outnumber the yeses. So we will certainly take a look at area school districts, Tomahawk, Wasaw, DC Everest, and see when their spring breaks are, if they've already got a calendar that's printed, or if they're in the same cycle as us establishing two calendars for the twenty, twenty-one school year and the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we are anxious. We've already had a look at that at the building principal meeting yesterday. And we're anxious to then bring some of our ideas to the board that will not only satisfy our parents and their busy schedule, but selfishly satisfy the needs of our students and to elevate our student achievement to higher levels. It would be nice, our past calendars have only had four and a half to five days built in. We all know what last winter was like. The new calendar could have as many as nine and a half days built in. That would, that would allow me to say confidently to our parents, this is the last day of school. So when you're looking at adding thirty minutes, imagine our students, all of our students getting out of school two days prior to the high school graduation. So you'd have the students' last day. Following day, you'd have the teachers' last day. The next day would be the Friday before, that is holiday, February morning day, for the high school graduation being the culminating event. And then we know exactly when to start summer school. We're beefing up that program to address student achievement needs as well. And it really makes, when we eliminate that question mark and say that this date is the last day of school, I think it makes it easy on everybody's plans. Any questions with anything that I've discussed in my report? I'll be bringing more information to the board regarding that. You'll be with us every step along the way of that calendar development. And I'm hoping that we can do it on that calendar, January, no later than February. And that wraps up my administrative reports.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample, for your thorough administrative reports. And thank you to all the directors and cabinet team members for all your thorough reports as part of that. Next on our agenda this evening is the committee reports. The first one is the Finance HR Committee. We had the draft divided to the board from the November sixth, twenty nineteen committee meeting. John Smith is the chair, and other members of the Finance HR Committee are available for any questions from the board. Any board members have questions for that committee? Hearing none, we move on to the next committee, which is the Facilities Committee. We had the attached draft minutes from the November sixth, twenty nineteen committee meeting. Myself is the chair, and other members of the Facility Committee are available for questions. Board members have any questions for those minutes from the November sixth committee meeting, Facilities Committee? Hearing none, our next committee report is from the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, also known as CTP. We had the draft minutes provided for the November thirteenth, twenty nineteen committee meeting. Maria Volpe is chair, and other members of that committee are available for questions. Any board members have any questions on the CTP committee report this evening? All right. Thank you. Hearing none, the next item on our agenda is unfinished business, of which we had none in that category. So we will move to board of education business for this evening. The next, first topic under board of education business is the central office and maintenance emergency power with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. And the Facilities Committee has reviewed that and has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Board member Smith?
My motion is to accept the recommendation of the purchase of the vision of a standby generator for the central office in the maintenance building.
Good motion by John Smith, second by Maria Volpe. Any discussion on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. The next item under board of education business is the renewal of the HBAC service contract. A topic summary sheet was provided by Dale Bergman. He provided us in that topic summary sheet the bids as they became available, and there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Chairman?
Recommend a motion to remove the two-year feedback service agreement with Complete Control Incorporated as submitted.
The motion by Chairman, and the second by Paul. Do we have any questions or discussion on the motion or that topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item under board business is the safety grant for the door monitoring project. The attached topic summary sheet was from Dale Bergman. The Facilities Committee has reviewed this topic and has a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to recommend approval of purchase order of one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents for the door monitoring project with Complete Control Incorporated.
The motion by Paul, we have a second?
Second.
Second by many people. Christie is the one that I heard and saw first. Any questions or discussions on the motion or this topic? Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to confirm for the record that the money's being used are from a grant that's already been awarded to us.
It is from the safety grant, correct, Dr. Sample? It is from the Safety Grant, correct, Dr. Sample? So yes, that's correct. Any other questions or discussions for this motion or not? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. The next item on Board of Education business is the Nexus Agreement. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample. There is no action required for the recommendation. I'd like Dr. Sample to briefly review for the record the topic summary sheet. Dr. Sample?
Thank you. As you know, we worked with Nexus for, it's kind of a two-phase project. They were instrumental in planning our strategic planning event and then they were to create a strategic, or the facility study as well. Kevin and I have met with Nexus at the table in my office. We've also had numerous meetings and phone conversations involving Dale Bergman, Brian Dasher and myself. We received their proposal and their contract about, not quite two months ago. And I'll get to that in just a minute. But, you know, we're, in all of our conversations, they seem to continue to focus on phase three of the project. We're really wanting phase one and phase two information. Our enrollment, what can we do with our boundaries? What can we do with where our students reside to tighten up our transportation and those types of things? And so we were starting to consistently hear of a potential October 2020 referendum and at the presidential election. And that was much too quickly for where I understand our board and our district to be heading with the next referendum, since we just passed a four-year operational referendum. And so the part about receiving the contract specifically reads, "If for any reason the board does not approve the plan or substantial portions thereof, or does not proceed with phase three, which involves construction potentially and remodeling, then the district shall upon receiving the invoice from Nexus P Nexus in an amount of two ten cents per square foot for each building included in the audit." With our square footage, you can almost gauge it by quarter miles or square miles. That's approximately eighty thousand dollars. I'll admit that scared us just a little bit from a responsibility standpoint. And so while we understand that that service comes at a cost and we don't expect anybody to work for free and we get that they're a very reputable company and they do quality work, we were more interested in phase one and phase two. So after several meetings, this is what I have put in the topic summary that I would recommend that Dale Bergman and myself, and Dale has extensive experience in his past life, that we become the project managers and we begin working on phases one and two. And we're going to provide a timeline of the next Facilities Committee meeting on December 4 to make that happen and get that done.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. One question. I just want to reiterate one part through our discussions, as you had mentioned with Nexus, while they have a lot of projects going on throughout the state, it was determined, and we've talked about it as a board a number of times, what their timelines were to provide data. And they were quickly slipping into the first or second quarter, I mean, well into second semester of the year, where we thought we would have this data by January 1st so that really allowed your recommendation to work with Dale to be brought to the board this evening. At this time, I would ask any board members for any discussion or questions to Dr. Sample. Lyndon?
Oh, I guess the next thing that I'm going to talk about here, some of these information that we have not received yet would be good to know, especially when we're looking at potentially making other changes to other buildings. And so in order, depending on wherever we decide on the other item tonight, I would like to have that information in front of us for...
And to be clear, the facility study is a completely independent project and our next topic of potential reconsolidation. Those two are running parallel, of course, like everything that we do. I'm not recommending this as dependent on the other decision, but the board may feel differently. So I want to make sure that we keep these two separate. Both recommendations come, that Dale and I would be project managers to get this done ourselves in-house so that we can speed up the process that I feel has been lagging quite a bit. And then the other recommendation comes, completely independent. So wherever the board wants to do it, but that recommendation on the next topic is completely independent for our facility. So you guys see them running parallel.
Because I see them running together because there is a facility that we're looking at tonight that is going to leave a big impact on this district, no matter what we decide. So I look at those, that information, that they go hand in hand, although we could disturb themselves. And so that's where I'm coming from. And I agree to know as much facts and details as possible in order to make a big decision that we have to make. I have lots.
I would note that, Lyndon, I was part of our joint disappointment in not having the data from Nexus anticipated to be by the end of the year. So we will get an update at the next Facilities Committee meeting, of which you are a member of, and myself. I see another hand, Mr. Smith?
I had the opportunity to contract also, and from my understanding, it was basically by signing it, in order to receive phase one and two, we're committing to phase three. The commitment to phase three would be maybe a thousand dollar first day. And it seemed as though their direction was already set in place for a large-scale tackle referendum. And it would happen as soon as possible from their perspective. So the idea of, I guess, backing away from that commitment in support of, simply because there is ample resources in the district to redesign the district, one of the things that almost became evident too is that some of the processes in their facilities planning is almost for increasing enrollment in situations where you're expanding buildings and expanding the district, where I think we kind of have an opposite situation going on in there. So I think it's a good prudent decision to not bind us to a large-scale project management by signing one agreement and then connecting all the other groups to each other.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions on this topic from other board members? Another thing, just for your review, and I guess for the record, it was within that agreement also that the phase one and phase two documents that they would provide would have been their sole, would have been owned by them and retained by them. So there were other catches in there as well. So that was informational only. No recommended motion to approve that agreement. Does anyone have any other discussion or emotion contrary to the recommendation? Otherwise, we will move forward. Our next item on our agenda is a preliminary discussion regarding the potential consolidation of Maple Grove Elementary School into the three in-town elementary schools. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher. And Dr. Sample, I'm going to turn it over to you for highlights on that. And then we can talk to Mr. Dasher from there and hand it over to any questions.
Clarification for everybody, there's no action being taken tonight. This is exactly the way we titled it, or the way we titled it. It's preliminary discussion regarding potential consolidation of Maple Grove Elementary School into the three-town elementarys. Everything that we know now is in the topic summary sheet. We're talking about student achievement and how it's been declining or flat district-wide for the past three years as measured by the Wisconsin Forward Exam. We're also talking about refocusing our efforts. We've adopted smarter spending, which is a process of, that some districts use and that we're using to only provide research-based and not to continue to do things because that's the way we've done them. So we're really tightening our efforts for student achievement. Also, it's potential reconsolidation of those monies to address student achievement, which is not a savings. We have a balanced budget towards the referendum, the operational referendum. So those moves that we are making are for student achievement. We also have the demographic study there that shows that we will continue to decline. And so that's the premise for the preliminary discussion tonight. There's no vote or anything because we've outlined even the timeline. This is the revised timeline that, or members that you received via hard copy. And so at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Brian. Those are just some of the points that I wanted to clarify initially.
So, yeah, I would just redirect it back to the topic summary sheet. So it kind of gives a background where we're at. We reviewed this in the November 4 Finance HR Committee. So as Dr. Sample mentioned, we are embarking on this higher school spending framework, which is heavily focused on academic return on investment, heavily focused on looking at how we, as a district, are spending money and tying our finances, our budgeting practices to student achievement and what's best for students. Currently, student achievement in the areas of reading and mathematics has been declining or flat for the past three years, as mentioned by the Wisconsin Forward Exam. Just a note about the school report cards versus the Forward Exam. The Forward Exam scores factor into the school report cards. However, because there's other elements that go into the school report card score itself and because they're weighted differently, it kind of gives a little bit different picture of the district than what the actual Forward Exam results do. So when you look at the actual Forward Exam results, that's measuring the percentage of students that are either considered advanced, proficient, or below grade level, basically compared to the last one. So where we are at as a district, when you look at it as a district as a whole, our advanced and proficient percentages are in the low to mid-forties as an entire district. And then when you look across at each of the schools, each school in the district is in the thirty to forty percent range. I think a few of them are reaching into that low to mid-forty percent range. So that means we have significantly less than fifty percent of our students in each one of our schools scoring below advanced or proficient. So they're at that basic or below grade level performance level. Now, the state of expense in the school report cards looks at other factors, student growth, post-second, attractive, post-secondary readiness. And I'm spacing on the fourth one, but anyway, they weight those differently. So what you have is this whole kind of paradox, where a school or a district that's meeting expectation, but only forty percent or less than forty percent of our students are proficient in English, language arts, and mathematics. So that means we have a lot of work to do. And that means that we have to refocus efforts in reading and mathematics in particular. And so those are the two low areas. And it means that we have to change the way that we are doing things. And that is likely going to result in several different strategies. One, it's going to result in looking at the way we teach, looking at our curriculum that we're using, and looking at our staffing levels. Do we have the correct staff in place? Do we have the correct type of staff in place? There are areas over the last few years that we have cut staff, particularly in student services, thanks to social orders, school sites, and special education. And when you dig deeper into the Forward Scores, we see that there's a significant gap in this district between economically disadvantaged students and regular education students, and a significant gap between special education students and regular students. So we are significantly underserving those populations in our district. Now, it's going to take resources to address this issue in the district. And those resources aren't going to come from the state. We just, Dr. Sample forwarded me an update from one of his meetings where they had a legislative update and there is some significant apprehension at the legislative level about providing additional funding, as they did in this past round, to schools in the 2123 budget by hand. Specifically, they are, the Republican majority is upset with Governor Ebers' vetoes that increased funding for school districts. They are disillusioned with the Forward Exam results that were reported a couple months ago prior to the school report card. And there is a lot of talk in the legislature about how they did increase funding for schools, and yet the Forward Exam results went down significantly statewide. And so the outlook for the next biennium is that there's going to be a lot of resistance from the Republican majority in the legislature to providing any additional funding to schools. So that means any resources that we're going to need to address student achievement gaps that we have in our district is going to have to come from us. It's going to have to come from existing dollars that we have, existing resources. And so it's very important, more than ever before, that we take a hard look at how we're spending money and whether or not it's the most efficient and most effective way to spend money and is it being spent in the areas where it needs to be spent in. Now, this is a loaded question. It's an extremely emotional question for a lot of people. And it's a difficult question to answer because there is so much that we do in this district that affects so many different people. And even the smallest programs has an effect and an impact on students and families. And discontinuing the existing program, whatever it may be, whether it may be closing a school or maybe it be eliminating an athletic program, is going to be difficult. And it's going to have a human impact. And I recognize that. I recognize the comments that were made here tonight by the public. I recognize the importance that they have for their school. And each school community in our district feels that same way. And I certainly wouldn't be here having written this topic summary sheet if I didn't feel it was important for us to start having a discussion. It's a difficult discussion. And I think we're going to have to have more of these over the coming years because we are continuing to decline enrollment. And currently, we have more space in our buildings than we have students. And that's not going to change anytime soon. And it's only going to increase. And so we have to have some difficult conversations over the next years. If it's not Maple Grove, it's going to be other schools because we just have an excess of space. So that's why we are bringing this discussion forward to you tonight. Now, as Dr. Sample said, it's a preliminary discussion. So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. There's a lot of data analysis that needs to be conducted. And there's a lot of discussion that needs to take place about the contract. The one comment that was made tonight about the Governance Board's attorneys stating that there's no legal recourse for the district to even allow it to close the school is correct. And if you jump down to the bottom of the first page of my topic summary sheet, I say, given that the district is currently in year, in year three of the contract with the Maple Governance Board, the district cannot even allow it to close the school, one of two processes need to be followed if the school were to be closed for the 2021 school year. The MAPS Board would either have to reach a mutual agreement with the Maple Grove Governance Board to close the school, or the MAPS Board would have to revoke the contract under the terms of section 27 of the contract. So that is something that we are in talks right now with the attorney. We are reviewing the contractual obligations that we have as a district. And that's going to take some time. And as you see in the revised timeline that I have, that you have, that's the handout that Tammy gave you earlier, we have December 4 at the Finance Committee meeting there. We are scheduling an executive close session to consult with our attorney about these legal issues. Not only the contract between the district and the Governance Board, but also to look at the deed. at the deed, as was brought up tonight as well. There are some contractual obligations that we have as per the title to a property, and so those have to be taken into consideration as well as we move forward through this process. The second stage of that then would be, should the Finance HR Committee decide to advance that discussion forward to the full board on December eighteenth, then the full board would adjourn into executive close session and have that same discussion with the attorney. And discuss those legal issues surrounding the contract and surrounding the deed to the, to the property. At that particular point then, the board would have the opportunity to come out of executive close session and vote whether or not to proceed. At that point, what you would be doing is you would only be voting to move forward with the termination of the contract. Now, there's legal requirements that you have to follow, and so that would not be the final vote on whether or not the school closes at that time. There is a time period that has to wait, that if you choose to exercise that clause, the, that, that's part of the contract, and so the attorney will discuss that with you in December. Now, the board wouldn't actually take a final vote on whether to close the school until February board meeting at this point, given the timeline that the attorney has laid out for us. So we have a significant amount of time here to continue to this discussion and decide where we want to go with this. Now, the board also, and this is, we're not asking for any decision tonight. We're not asking you to do anything in terms of deciding whether or not to close the school. However, as, or you do have the authority to simply say, we don't want to, we want to end this right now, and we don't want to proceed with this at this point. So I do want to put that out there and just let you know what your authority is. This is, it's only, this is just an administrative proposal at this time to have this preliminary discussion and go through this. Now, what would happen in subsequent meetings is we would start to answer some of these questions and bring forward some of the data regarding some of the questions that have been asked already by both the community and some of the board members about what would that look like if we did close the school? Where would the students go? What would that have, what would do, what would that do to school, our class sizes in the remaining elementary schools? How would we do that? How would we ensure that the school, the class sizes don't get over large and too big for the teachers to handle and things like that? What we did want to do in our commend room as an administration was, do we spend the next several months doing all of that under the radar and then coming to you in February with a recommendation, having all the answers already figured out and springing this on you and the community, saying, yeah, we've been working on this for the last four months, but we don't want to bring it up because we didn't have all the answers? So what we're doing here tonight is trying to let you know what we're doing, what we're thinking, the direction that we're going, is getting this conversation out there as soon as possible, rather than springing this on the community and board later this winter or early spring. So that's kind of where we're at, and right now, it's just a preliminary timeline. This timeline that I gave you is subject to revision as well, depending on where we're at in the process, depending on where you feel we have provided you with the necessary information you have, need to make this decision, or anything else that you feel you need to add to this in terms of community listening sessions, discussions with the Governance Board, or discussions with different stakeholders together and put. So that's all I have for my presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Dr. Sample?
No, I think those are very brief.
I would agree. This time, I would like to ask any board members that have any questions, either for this evening or for future reference on this topic, or either Mr. Dash or Dr. Sample. Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not totally ready to make any decisions tonight because I do need more facts. I am totally undecided of what the best decision is going to be for this district as of tonight. I would like to know if we did go ahead with the closure. What would transportation cost us to get the children from Maple Grove District into town? What would that, what would we be looking at for that? What would the cost be to maintain that building? Maintenance fees to take care of that building because we would have to still do that, correct? Next question would be, what would be losing fees if all these parents decide to take their children elsewhere? There'd probably be a good chunk of change. That's my questions that I have. Next question is, I mean, the numbers of students, what are we going to look for in class sizes? I would like to see those numbers with figures. And I mean, this is a hard decision, and I've gone through this when we had to do the, everything, and I was a parent at that time, and that was hard. And so I do know the feelings that everything is going through right now. It is an emotional, it's an emotional thing, and it's not easy. And it's not easy for a board member either. And I just wanted to just say that. I mean, it's more than just comments and stuff like that, but it's also facts. I have children, and it does get here too. And so not only do I have to look at the children out at Maple Grove, but I have to look at all of our children as a whole. And so I need more facts, and I'd rather have those facts before I go ahead with any decision. Thank you.
I took some notes. Are there any, after sample or Brian, any clarification on what Linda would be looking for?
Yeah, we, we did some of that, we do have some of that analysis already completed. Actually, we, we did a lot of that about two years ago during the referendum planning process, when we had the closure of Maple Grove and Jefferson on the table, I had the contingency of the, if a referendum, referendum had failed. So we will present that in due time. I've got to update some of those numbers so that they reflect two thousand nineteen numbers and not two thousand seventeen, eighteen numbers. But for the most part, so a couple things that we did back then, we do have an analysis. Well, back then, we did a comparison. It's not hard to actually do a, a look at what our current class sizes are in terms of, or what would happen if we moved those students into town. We did do an analysis of what would happen in terms of the revenue limit impact if different amounts of students from Maple Grove decided to open and roll out. And so I'm waiting to update that. I actually did, I actually didn't have it available to project tonight, but I didn't realize there was going to be a projector here, not a projector here tonight. So I will have that available, and probably I could have that, all that available at the December board meeting. It's, it's just a matter of updating those. Transportation costs probably wouldn't go down a whole lot because we've already got a bus that's taking students from in-town up to Maple Grove, and so that route would just be kind of reversed. In fact, it probably would be a little bit of a savings that we're projecting on transportation. But again, we can have all that, our, firmed up for the December or January meeting, depending on where we need to be. So yeah, we, we're basically just kind of dusting off our seventeen, eighteen pre-referendum plan and updating those numbers currently for, to reflect twenty nineteen, twenty data So, and one of the things, one of the things too, when we talk about enrollment, will, when we look at class sizes this year, elementary enrollment from last year to this year decreased by about forty-some students. So when we look at this year's class sizes, we can probably anticipate another forty or so decline in the elementary population as well. So there's going to be a little bit, just due to natural declining enrollment, the typical declining enrollment that we've seen, there will be seats that open up next year that are not currently open this year. And so those class sizes will, will probably not change a whole lot once we, if, if we were to bring in a significant amount of students. But that will, as, as we get further along in the year, it'll be a little bit easier to project that. And once we start getting kindergarten enrollments and stuff, we'll be able to better project what our enrollments are going to be in the elementary school. Right now, it's going to be kind of a guess. We'll do a little bit of a mathematical calculation to estimate enrollments next year, but as that, as the year progresses, those will get more accurate.
Thank you, Linda. We'll turn over the notes and then over to Kristy.
Basically, I'm just going to give an opinion. I don't necessarily have the exact facts, but some of the numbers I've been looking at and some other things. Thirteen years ago, I had a granddaughter started there in kindergarten, so I've spent quite a bit of time out in Maple Grove. And there's a culture out there that money can't buy, you know? I asked the resource officer how many times she's been called out there in the last five years. She said, once, and that was because a student wanted to talk to him now because there was any problems. You go out there and watch the kids, the big kids, fifth graders, fourth graders, help the first graders. I don't see that in our schools. You know, I don't, I've never heard of any bullying out there. I've never seen it. I've spent a lot of time out there. And this past year, the board decided that because we can't roll out all schools, each board member was going to adopt the school. So I was given Maple Grove, which I was very happy to. But it was just a pleasant personality, just a way of life that you can't teach, you know? It's just there. And I think that's been going on for years. I'd just hate to see that disappear. And as far as for moving, you know, closing the school because we have a space problem, which we all realize, we're not going to solve it. Because in my opinion, after talking to a lot of the parents and talking to the Governance Board and spending a lot of time out there, I would estimate two-thirds of the parents are not going to send their kids to Merrill Public School. Even if you say, even if we got half, we're not going to solve the space problem in Merrill. We're still going to have to deal with the problem. So closing Maple Grove is not going to save our, solve our space problem. It'll put it down, but it won't solve it. Busing, I, you know, granddaughter is a kindergarten and first grader. The bus was there at five after six in the morning. She had an hour and a half ride to school. You have another half hour tomorrow. You know, these kids are going to be on the bus three, four hours a day. I have not heard any plan on how we would solve the time spent on busing. It, it just, financially, you know, I've heard some figures. I don't know how accurate they are, but there's roughly eighty kids out there, give or take a few. And roughly, we did ninety-six, ninety-five hundred dollars, something like that a student, correct me if I'm wrong. Say ten thousand to make numbers easy. Eighty kids, ten thousand is eight hundred thousand a year that we get from the state. Okay? I've heard we can save four hundred thousand by moving the kids to Merrill. I don't disagree with that. That's probably an accurate number. The problem is if we lose half the kids, we're only going to get four hundred thousand, so we've lost our savings. Now, we also get, have six years of those kids when they leave Maple Grove come to Merrill. So we've got six years of ten thousand a kid coming to Merrill. If we lose half of those to Marathon and Athens and Wasso and homeschooling and, you know, bridges or some, we're actually, in my opinion, we're going to lose money by closing the school. So we're not going, we're not going to gain anything. I, I'd like to see us make some work, work with them and build that school up to the hundred capacity or something, which if we made a long-term commitment out there, I, I've heard people say, oh, I'm not sending my kids out there because in two years or a year from now, you're going to close it and then they're going to be disrupted. If we made a long-term commitment out there, I believe that school would fill up to a hundred people, and we'd have it full. And it would be a profitable school, and it'd be a feeder for Merrill because the kids would come here to the middle school and to the high school. They wouldn't be going all over the area. I just, I just think we're not looking at the total picture, and I'd be the first to say I could be wrong, but I think it would be a human's mistake to close this school. And that's how I feel.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Any questions on that discussion from now? Or Kristy next, or we can go Mr. Dash with that?
Yeah, I, I'm not all going to argue against the culture out there, and I'm not going to argue against the values that the, the schools instill in the children and the value that that has for the parents out there. And that, you know, if board decides that that's what they want to do is to maintain that school, then, then I don't, you know, I, I can respect that decision. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm sitting here as the Finance Director, giving you the numbers, telling you what the state of the district is in, and I can tell you that if we do keep Maple Grove open, you're going to have to decide then what to do with in-town schools. Because you will probably end up, you, you will, if not next year or the year later, or, you know, within the next five years, well, let me, let me be blunt. If we don't, if we, if we do close Maple Grove, within the next five years, we're going to have to take another look at one of the elementaries because if the enrollment does continue to decline, you're going to have emptier and emptier in-town schools. So if we do keep Maple Grove open, then you're going to push the closure of one of the other elementaries, and that discussion is going to have to come earlier then as well. And that, I, you know, how do I say this? I don't have any, I don't, I don't have the emotional investment in the school that anybody else does, that you do or that the community does. And, you know, this is an issue that is a numbers issue that the district has to deal with, that the US Board has to deal with. And, you know, if, and we're not asking you to make, nobody's asking US Board to make a decision tonight. We're just having the discussion, and it's really a bigger discussion about the long-term future of our, of our district in the declining enrollment situation. In the next ten years, we're probably going to be down anywhere from another three hundred to five hundred students. We have a middle school that could fit another hundred and fifty, two hundred, maybe even three hundred students in that. So we've got a middle school with a significant amount of empty space. We're going to have elementary schools that are going to be in the same condition here in the next three, four, five years. And so that is going to create additional expenses, maintain additional buildings. And so there is, there is no doubt there's value in small school buildings, and there's no, there's, there's value in those neighborhood elementary schools. It's expensive to maintain that. It's very expensive to maintain that. And so if that's the route we go, then we're going to have to make some other decisions to afford that kind of elementary configuration. And that is something that is entirely up to the board's decision and board's direction, and I will try to support you in whatever, whatever you need to have that information, to have the information you need to make that decision. So we are in the early stages. We don't have, you know, plans for, you know, how are we going to transport the kids? How, what are the, what are the bus routes going to look like? Those will come later when we, because there's, there's a certain amount of work that's got to be done, and we're going to have to find out, first of all, who's actually going to be coming back if we do close the school, and then redraw those, those transportation routes, district-wide. I can't tell you right now, we've got school, we've got, we've got kids on Maple Grove that are coming from in-town, and so they're on a twenty to thirty minute bus ride from Maple Grove where they get on. where they, they, they get dropped off at the middle school. And then they pick up a shuttle, basically, from the middle school to Maple Grove and then back again. And then they get on the buses. And so they're on, they're on the bus route, seeing how long it takes already, those in-town school kids. Now, I just lost my train of thought. So we will, we will work on those plans as we move through this. Like I said, it's going to be difficult to have, it's, it's, the, the timing of when to have a decision made is kind of difficult. Do we invest all the work in redrawing the boundaries and rerouting the buses before or after the decision is made? And we can do either way. And that's why this timeline is preliminary in this draft. We can revise it. We can bump that, that item up to a January timeline if we kind of know if physically possible or not to start looking at that. We might not have enough preparation at that time. So, but I, I do respect what you said, Nups. And I, and I totally respect what everybody out here is feeling and what they're saying. And yeah, this is a tough decision. And I certainly don't want to be here today having to make the recommendation by Department of Justice. I got to give my judgment to the board.
And Ryan, I'm not disagreeing with you. I understand where you're coming from and what you're saying. And, but, you know, we, we do have a space problem. It's a difficult decision for everybody, whether it's us, you, Dr. Sample, you know, the students. But I just don't think we're going to solve by closing Maple Grove. We're still going to have a space problem. So that's something the board has to, we have to...
You're, you're right. You're right. If, and I, I want to make that clear. I don't believe that we're solving the space issue by closing Maple Grove. Because, and I've said it before, if we close Maple Grove, I, I'll be one. It's the first of many decisions that we're going to have to make over the next few years to decide what to do about the amount of buildings we have for our dwindling population of students. And it won't be the last school that we end up having to close over the next five to ten years.
Thank you. Dr. Nups, I hear Kristy, then Brett, in German. So Kristy, you have the floor.
So you directed us to the Maple Grove contract. We have a contract with Maple Grove. We had a, that number twenty-seven termination by district. And it has seven different numeral. And it talks about the default. I'd like to know what the default is. I mean, we don't have that yet.
So that is what will be addressed in the closed section with the attorney. The attorney will walk you through that and will walk you through the legal issues surrounding what the default is. As a board, because this is a legal contract and there's going to be legal issues surrounding this, depending on where you choose to go as a board. Yes, if a mutual agreement can't be reached, then the only other option is to look at that section and determine whether or not there is default. And that is what the attorney will be discussing with you at the December board meeting. And you're going to want, as a board, you're going to want to maintain your right to attorney-client privilege until that decision has been made regarding that section of the contract. You, the board, have to listen to the attorney's recommendations and decide whether or not you want to move forward on that. And until such time, that will remain attorney-client privilege until you act as a board. And you're going to, you're going to want to maintain that, given that things could potentially, depending on your decision again. And what I'm saying now, solidify your decision. You, you may have to engage in, you know, well, you kind of get more along. But that is going to be discussed at the closed section. Will the finance committee on December fourth? We'll see a preliminary draft of that, our discussion of those items, and then bring that forward in closed section again at the December eighteenth meeting.
And then also, I know it was, the savings was approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Can we see a breakdown of all of that?
Yeah. So right now, that, that will be also part of, that will also be part of the closed section. We'll have a breakdown of all the costs involved in operating the school, both from an annual operating perspective and a long-term capital improvements perspective for what the building actually needs in terms of long-term work. And then we'll break down the revenue that's generated by the school, compare that against its operating expenses. And so you'll see, you'll see that breakdown probably at the December fourth committee level in closed section and then again at the December eighteenth closed section. Again, as part of that discussion with the attorney about section twenty-seventh of the contract.
Thank you.
I'll tell you your questions. And then Kristy, Dr. Sample, if you'd like to add. This time to Brett for his questions. Jeremy to follow.
I think, I'm going to repeat this briefly, I originally don't too. I think, I like what you said, Brian, the last point. Now, just our agenda, actually, it's titled preliminary discussion. Those two words, preliminary discussion. This wasn't ever meant to be a decision made today. It wasn't supposed to have all the facts, like I promised today. They are just coming forward right now, asking, is this something that we can look at? Is this something that we need to pursue? With the standing of looking at data that was presented to us last week from our Director of Curriculum Instruction, that points out grades one, two, three, four, and five and all of our buildings have, the majority of students identified below grade level. Six and seven are majority below grade level. And we have a little bit of uptick at the high school, where we have only thirty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-four, sixty-four, and thirty-nine percent identifies below grade level. But the trend being, a majority of our students are not meeting expectations that are expected of them. So if this is what Dr. Sample, our director, corrector, our administrative team says to us is an idea or a possibility to bring forward, that this is going to improve the majority of students in our district to become better students when they walk out of these doors over here and go out into the world, we have to trust that that is an opinion that we need to look at. They're not just going to put something forward that we're not going to have all the facts on. I was a Scott School, Scott School kid, grades one and two, and I had been with the Jefferson. Status quo has to change sometimes. But I don't think, I agree a hundred percent on that we need more facts and that's what they'll bring to it. But this is a preliminary discussion of looking at, how do we make sure that every student in the audience, every student in our district is as best prepared as we can make them as a school district with the funds that we have? And I think we do it a service to all community members if we don't at least look at how we can have their kids better prepared for life. I, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's a preliminary discussion and we owe it to everyone involved to make sure that we can prepare a student that comes out of Merrill High School, that Shannon shakes her hands, they walk across the stage, and they walk out those auditorium doors, that they are the best prepared they can possibly be for leading this community.
And one more point that I want to make sure that I'm clear on is, you know, we're, we're not making this suggestion because we are in financial difficulties in terms of the deficit for next year. Last year's budget forecast that I had done for this year and the next four years actually shows a small surplus, projected a small surplus for next year. So we're not trying to plug the deficit. We are not trying to solve all of our financial problems with just this closure. What we are trying to do is, this, this would actually be the first of many conversations we're going to have about how we're doing things, how we're spending our money, and how we can spend it in a different manner to achieve better results, district-wide. And so what we're trying to do is look out not only for what's best for Maple Grove, but we've got, I have to worry about what's best for the students and families at Kate, Jefferson, Washington, the high school, middle school, for Kate Head Start. And if we're spending money maintaining a number of buildings that we don't need to maintain because we have the ability to other buildings to house them, then that's money that's not going to additional reading instructors, reading interventionists, math interventionists, special ed teachers. We're significantly low in special ed. We've got a really tough, we've got, we've got caseloads in our spec, with our special ed teachers that are much, much too high. And, and so we have to not only look at just what's going on with our building configuration, but we have to look at what we're doing all across the district. Are we spending too much money transporting kids? Are we spending too much money on utilities? Are we spending too much money on technology? Are we spending too much money on administration? This is going to be the first of many analyses that we do. And it's not going to end with just Maple Grove. We're going to continually be looking. And that's part of that smarter school framework philosophy is to do a, is to really take a hard look at what we're spending our money on. Do the programs and services that we're currently spending our money on make sense from both an operational efficiency sampling, but also make sense from both an academic, economic perspective and a, and a cultural perspective? And so perhaps, notice you are right, perhaps Maple Grove, closing Maple Grove doesn't make sense from a cultural perspective. So then we have to make that a priority to maintain Maple Grove, but it's going to cost us elsewhere in the budget. And so that's why we're here tonight, just to start this discussion. You have multiple points over the next few months where you can end it. Right now, we're just, and, and really, the vote thing will be taken after the closed session with the attorney on December is going to be whether or not you think. There is justification that there's a strong argument under section twenty-seven to revoke the contract. If you don't feel that, that that's comfortable at that time, you don't take that vote. And we either continue the discussion to figure that out or you vote no. We're not going to, we're not going to proceed with this. And so, you know, what, what we don't want to do, I don't want to pass, I've been there long enough to know that we've, we've kind of, we've sprung these decisions on the board along the way very out of the blue. And the board just felt like we've surprised you. And I'm trying not to do that this time around. I'm trying to give you, trying to get you all upfront, and this is what we're thinking about, Sage. And there's pros and cons to that, obviously. It, it means we're coming to you without a lot of answers. But it also means that we want you involved in the process and giving, and we want your input. And we do want to know what questions you have on your mind to make sure. I mean, we're anticipating, we've anticipated a lot of your questions, Linda. But there may be questions that we're not anticipating. And that's why we need you guys involved upfront in the process rather than at the tail end of it.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, I had Jeremy, a lullaby of John Smith.
Thank you. While we're still in this preliminary discussion, my point, my narrow opinion is this is a very drastic move. This is a very drastic move, deeply considering at this point. I've had heard from a lot of community members about this topic, all the rest, yeah, all the rest of it. And they brought some very interesting points, which I think is deeply valuable to bring up tonight. First one that really kind of resonated with me is the overall picture since this whole conversation, this whole topic is going to compete for a community. You look at that timeline, two and a half years ago, we asked this community, and we expect community members here tonight, to approve operating our faculty. As part of that referendum discussion, the closure of Maple Grove was the success, it was the best. Here we are two and a half years later, it passed the referendum, and now we're talking about closing Maple Grove again. Another year and a half, we're potentially looking at asking them for another referendum for another four years. So if you kind of just kick back and look at it from their perspective on the outside, what it looks like on the score, I could personally imagine how that does seem to you. It does the same, right? Secondly, as part of the referendum, we had, because I'm obviously finding for a lot of different points. Not long though, we approved the creation of two brand-new administrative positions in the district that we never had before. And now we hear four months later that we'll have to close the school. So again, the message that's, could be perceived as we're telling our community that creating new positions is more important than having an entire school. Last but not least, my personal opinion is, when you shut down an entire school, you're only causing displacement issues for students because they go to somewhere else, obviously. Potential staff deaths, which that affects more families. Obviously, they have to go to different jobs and not go to the district. And then you're having an entire, not only entire property being shut down, not being used, but there is some validity to the fact this is a property that's been for the district for a long time. It's been for our community for a very long time. So I'm not saying this is ridiculous or anything like that. I completely understand why this is even brought up. But it is my opinion that before we even discuss this any further, we should take a good, long, hard look at our finances and our expenses before we even consider shutting down an entire school.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. I think you heard of questions that you need clarification from Jeremy there. We already, Jeremy, exactly our plan. No decisions tonight. We're going to give you much more information. This is a preliminary discussion and so, yeah. And it would be foolish of us to think that we're, we're recommending based on having no answers for you to make a decision. So all of the questions and, and those things, I mean, there's going to be more on this timeline. Like Brian Dasher said, this timeline is flexible. We've got a term of conversations regarding the legal issues and so, those will be forthcoming. I'd say turn it over to John Smith next. Just a reminder, Brian and Dr. Sample could add to that with the future presentations. A reminder of the past topic summary sheet as to what the focus of resolution by hiring two new administrators were. I think we're crossing two different topics here in the budgeting process. And I think everyone needs a reminder of what the goal was there and what the board approved at that time for adding two administrative positions. While it is a dollar and cents matter, there were other targets as to what was trying to be accomplished with those dollars and those positions, as well as measurables that were put together by this board as to making sure that that was the right decision, not only at the time but going forward.
Yeah. I, I went on record at, at one time, supporting those positions and I still do. And I actually went on record saying that I believe that we need additional administrative support in the remaining buildings as well. I think what, what we're seeing, and whether or not that administrative support would be in the form of an AP at those other buildings is open, I would, I would be, you know, flexible on. But I think where we need the support in particular is in, there's, there's specific people services supports that over the past twenty years, this district has eliminated. That I think has severely harmed our ability to serve certain populations in this district. Economically disadvantaged, special education populations. And we've eliminated guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers. We, as I mentioned before, our special education teachers have far too high numbers on their caseload. And those are creating issues for our principals in their building. They don't have the support from those positions. And the addition of the AP in the, at Kate and both at the high school was a way to address that and was addressing the most immediate need that those buildings have. Our principals need to be instructional leaders in their building. Research has shown across, a lot of research has shown that effective schools have principals that are in their classrooms observing and coaching from an instructional standpoint, not from a valuatorial standpoint, but from a coaching standpoint, educational standpoint, where they are co-teaching, where they are coaching their teachers on instructional strategies, that they're spending upwards of anywhere near eighty percent of their time in the classroom. Right now, we've got that clip. Our, our, our principals are spending eighty percent of their time simply on student behaviors time simply on student behaviors and just regular building management and administrative tasks. They're not out in the classroom supporting teachers. They're not out there coaching. As I've mentioned before, the requirements of educator effectiveness from the DPI has increased our workload per teacher by hours, 10 to 20 hours per teacher. So in the past few years, the workload of principals has dramatically increased. And I'll go back to the point that I mentioned earlier, we're going to look at every area of expenditure in the district. We're not going to stop at Maple Grove. We are going to look at ways to save and to cut and to reduce expenses in non-priority areas to address the priorities that came out of the strategic planning process last spring. And it's going to be an ongoing process. It's going to be a process of evaluating our current programs and services, sunsetting the ones that are no longer effective or relevant, and redirecting those funds into new programs, new curriculum, new professional development for teachers, new positions to support economically disadvantaged students or special education students, or positions to support behavioral interventions in the, in the buildings. We've talked about we need behavioral interventionists in some of our schools to support our principals in the issues that they're dealing with. We're dealing with, we're dealing with issues today that we weren't dealing with 10 years ago, the vaping, the social media, the cyberbullying. These have added a whole new dimension to managing a school of 300 students, 400, 500, or even 80 students that we didn't have 10 years ago. And so we're, we are not, as a school, public education is in general, is having difficulty adapting to the changing times and the changing culture around us. And we made some decisions, budgetary decisions years ago, starting back in the early 90s, 2000s, going all the way up until, you know, several years ago, to eliminate positions that we desperately need now. And those were, those were mistakes to eliminate. And we are, we are starting to see the impact that that's having on the workload of our principals to deal with student behavior issues, to deal with instructional time, coaching their teachers, and being the instructional leaders of their school. We don't have the time to do that anymore. And we need to change that.
Thank you, Mr. Dasher. Next, I had Board Member John Smith. Hand raise. Go ahead, John.
I think one of the interesting points is this conversation and this preliminary discussion was authorized back in June by the board unanimously when we adopted our strategic plan that we worked on for several months, which included the smarter spending framework and the research of Odin and of the Government Finance Officers Association. We've had ample discussions in regards to how we want to move forward into the future. We solidified that in a strategic plan, which we invested incredible amounts of time and money into. And so what I'm hearing from the administration is them doing their jobs, as it is. The part that I think is more emotional than anything to me is hearing an administrator say the word harm. We're harming our students. They're not at a proficient reading level. They're not at a proficient math level. They're not advanced. And so when you talk about emotions, those are the ones that get me, because public school systems aren't supposed to be that. They're designed to give every child in the community an equal opportunity to advance themselves to the fullest potential of their academic abilities, so that they can choose to either stay and support the community that they live in, or leave and flee perhaps the situation they were born into. At least that's my philosophy. But we, we gave them the instructions to do this a long ago. And so it is preliminary, and I think because Maple Grove became the first thing that we talk about, we forget that it's not even close to the last thing. We will talk about one day whether Jefferson will be shut down. We will talk about whether the German program will continue. We will talk about whether the sporting event will be canceled. Because at some point or another, the school size will have to fit the community size, because there's only a finite amount of money. So I guess I wanted to extend some encouragement to the administration, because Brian serves as a voice box, not to his opinion, but to what we instructed him to do over the last year, and also to all the administrators in the school system right now that feed him all the various aspects of what they need for resources, what they need for support in order to take those scores and turn them into what they should be, and that is proficient across the board. Two quick points, the, one thing that I also, as we move forward, I come to understand is I'm not qualified to understand what we need to do. This isn't my area of expertise. I need to trust that we've invested a considerable amount of time, money, and energy into the administration that we do have here, and I hope that they give us good, solid answers to solving problems that go way beyond my scope of practice. And then finally, the referendum, I think needs to be clarified. Those four never drafted a referendum to keep Maple Grove open. Maple Grove was to close, as was Jefferson, as an immediate response to a failed referendum. So the reason Maple Grove is open is not because people voted to give us an operating referendum. It was the result that the operating referendum passed, and we didn't have to execute that consequence. And it's a very important detail, that I think was very clearly made over and over up to the referendum process. At least that's what I have witnessed. So I encourage the continued discussion. I encourage the continued information. And I think it's important for us to understand that this is the very beginning. If we actually do what we say we were going to do in smarter school spending structure, Brian, with his administrative team, will bring forth more and more modifications to our school system to give us a higher quality education with a lower footprint, a smaller footprint, and basically give an efficient delivery of education in the city. We can't avoid it. It's unavoidable. If we do avoid it and just don't address it, the finances itself will then dictate it at some point in the budget process. Thanks.
Dr. Sample or Mr. Dasher, anything to add or clarify from Mr. Smith's questions, comments, or statements?
No.
I appreciate the clarification.
Mr. Smith, a couple of board members we haven't heard from this evening. Anyone else? Any other board members like the opportunity to speak, or ask any other clarifying questions? Not that was informational, only to use for discussion and data gathering, but I will ask if anyone does have a motion. Hearing on, we have a lot of questions and data to be gathered and to be shared at the committee level, as stated by Brian, I believe that was December 4 finance, HR, and we will clarify later that the December board meeting, I believe, is on December 18th. And if we go into January as well, depending on what the data dictates on these preliminary discussions, those will be our next opportunities to meet. Myself and the board would continue to encourage Dr. Sample to utilize his administrative team for all of the data that's been requested, including limited to those questions this evening, and to use those resources. If it's also Lenda Ojinski as the Director of Curriculum, Karen Baker, as it relates to our special education needs, cash and magic technology, of course, we've talked to Wardale Bergman, the Director of Buildings and Grounds and all things facilities in our district. We encourage you to anticipate any of those additional questions that may be. Some portions of this tied together so we can make informed decisions, as many board members have stated this evening. And not to exclude any of that, our Director of Human Resources, and talking about impacts there. With that being said, and not having any other hands raised on this, we'll move to the potential establishing a Q and A or question and answer meeting regarding potential consolidation of Maple Grove Elementary School into the three in-town elementary schools. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample. Would you like to add anything to that, Dr. Sample? Otherwise, I would be looking for a recommendation motion.
No, I think it's all stated. Thank you.
Is it informational, or is that a community listening session?
Oh, it's not.
It could be granted at that point. And if you had anything, we have heard from many of our constituents and members of the board requesting something. Is there any kind of recommendation from yourself for the administrative team on?
I do have a recommendation. I had expressed interest that, and received a lot of support from the board members at that time to establish a community session, whether it be called a listening session or a question and answer session, because it's a responsible thing to do. It did attend the Maple Grove Governance Board meeting on the evening of November 11th, and several community members had asked for the Board of Education to consider a time when most community members could be present, something later. I did, in my notes, 6 to 6:30, something that's going to be reasonable for everybody to show up. I noticed that we had a pretty decent crowd at 5:30, so I would be asking the board to consider something like 6 or 6:30. They also requested that the meeting be held in Maple Grove. So I would recommend for the board to consider a starting time of approximately 6 or 6:30, allowing potential attendees, required time to attend at the end of their workday. Also, to establish a time within the next few weeks would be appropriate. And my own difference would be that I do see this as a topic of concern for all community taxpayers. So it's of my opinion only that we would recommend an adequate venue which is centrally located, but that is left up to the board to decide, of course.
One of the questions there, before I turn it over to other board members, this evening, we did have an exceptional turnout on the topic and some of the comment. I did not have a chance to ask yourself, or Mr. Bergman, if something was to be recommended to be held at Maple Grove. What is the higher capacity out there? Do you have that number handy, or did Dale provide that? I know we talked this evening, that number was 50 to 60 people into the central administration building. But I think it would be a little more challenging if we did need to relocate a few out there and add this kind of response times five or six. I needed to relocate and figure out, you would have to have a backup plan of the location. I don't know if we have that data available this evening, or yourself or Dale?
I don't know the exact number, but we, roughly about seven square foot per person, and we're all standing. It's a long time to stand for meetings, so it's very prevalent to recommend 15 square foot or 15.
Jim?
Again, I'm not sure what other ones, or what you were talking about. But I feel that they have a bit higher capacity than Maple Grove.
I'm guessing that it potentially is not. I think the gymnasium may be the largest facility. I'm certainly under our control. Nub said it's hanging up in their hall. Since Dr. Sample met with the government's board, I have talked with them, and we brought that topic up. And I suggested we have it in Merrill, because I'd like to see somebody besides the Hamburg community have a chance to talk. And I don't think we'd get a lot of people from the Merrill area to drive off to Hamburg. So they agreed that they would come to a location in Merrill. So I would recommend we have it somewhere in Merrill, like we did at the library, or here, or something like that. That'd be my recommendation. All right. Thank you, Nub. Your hand up as well, or did nothing bad?
I would agree with what Nub said. I think that a matter of this importance, we need to have access room for everybody. Everybody can't speak, but everybody here. And we can't go somewhere and then find out we're too small, and then again try to go somewhere else, and it's still too small. We have a room here. That's how we use here.
Anything else? Maria, did you have something bad?
Just I think for the recommendation of administration, we put this listening session in the form of the HR committee.
I'll check the, the calendar. I know any later, we're starting to run into Christmas concerts and programming. The second, the third, the fifth, for hot students with Christmas concerts. If we went before the HR Finance Committee started running Finance, HR Committee, on the fourth, it would have to be, I would bring it to next week.
Can I, can I?
If the technical administration are behind the other, would you have that as asked for tonight?
No, I wouldn't be able to. If we have it before the December 4th, I don't, you know, I'm on vacation next week, and so I'm not going to have a whole lot more information than what I presented here tonight, ready for the December 4th, anything before December 4th. And anything before December 18th, really, I'm not going to be able to get into any of the contractual stuff. And so I don't know how valuable that would be until the board has decided what to do contractually. I can, I can, we can, anything we do have between December 4th and 18th, we can start to address some of the questions like Linda brought for. But any contract questions would have to wait until after the board decides what to do with the attorney's recommendation.
Thank you, Brian. I saw John Smith hand up.
The subject came up in, I had to an HR, so I had some time to look at the calendar. December 12th is the only, I guess, maybe they're having it here. That would have to be determined, too. There is Christmas programs every night in the month of December. December 12th happens to be the Prairie River Middle School program, which then would affect elementary schools. And I would assume they would have that Prairie River Middle School, so this auditorium would be open. And so I guess one of my recommendations was is that we host it here at the high school auditorium on December 12th. And then you can exclude contractual information, since I would come out of closed session anyways, and then just provide those, basically list of frequently asked questions that we get for the next month, and then have answers set for those, if that sounds favorable to you.
Thank you, John. The only other date that I was made aware of was after the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting on Wednesday, December 11th. There was not a holiday program that evening at any location. So those were the two dates that I had saw for various reasons as well. One for no program, one that was at the middle school. Paul, you had your hand up. That was.
I think we need to listen to what Brian's telling us. And he needs time to put this information together. And so I would recommend that we move this off of Dr. Daniel first, because like we said, we have all the Christmas programs coming up. We now met, give Brian time, the administration time to work, trust him, and give us the proper answers, so we're not going to be eating and asking more questions. Was there a motion before, I can't hear that sentence?
There was not a motion at this time. It's open discussion hall as to locations. And Nub's clarified that there was some discussion with the governance with their willingness to come to a location within the city, so all numbers could be heard. Board Member Smith had talked about the middle school holiday program, being at the middle school on the 12th. Board member Smith had talked about the middle school holiday program being at the middle school on the twelfth. So this auditorium would be open if that was something that Dr. Sample, Mr. Dasher thought that they could work with as far as dates were concerned. Reminder, if it hadn't been stated already, the January board meeting was earlier based on, based on state education convention. So that date is January fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, one other point, just a reminder about the timeline, contractually, this will require two votes of the Board to close. So the first one would be preliminary, at the December eighteenth meeting, you would issue a preliminary notice to the governance board. And then you wouldn't take the final vote until February. So if you don't issue that first vote, that first notice in December, then the issue is done. We don't have anywhere to go. And we would necessarily need additional listening session. If we schedule it in sometime in January, then that issue, that notice will be issued and then that process will have started. And we'll, we'll have, I'd have to consult with the attorney in terms of how much we can talk about in an open session or would be advisable to talk about in an open session, depending on how things work out. So I just want to make it clear that there's going to be, that attorney client privilege, because of the contractual legal issues, there's going to be some information that we may not be able to address. And so, but if you push it out till January, we'll be able to do a little bit more work and have firmer answers on hypothetical. We can do some cost projections. We'll have a lot more time to do the actual enrollment projections. I don't know if we'd be able to do transportation routes that early and give you an idea of how much time a scoop would be on a bus. That's, that's a little early and we could, we could at least start in January or even in, even later in December, we can at least start taking a look at what would class sizes look like. And, and you know, look at where they are currently and where people grow to that. So there's some, there's some things that we can do. There's going to be some things depending on attorney client privilege where you're going to want to possibly keep a closed session up until that. Depending on which way the vote goes in December and then possibly in February.
First available date for the, is it going to be that first full week of January? Sorry to inform you, for Wednesday, our ultimate meeting is, is late. And then Tuesday, we've got facilities followed by finance HR. Wednesday, we've got CTP followed by my age meeting and then Thursday is the next available date. It would put it, it would, there's a lot going on, but that would be the first available date in January is Thursday, January night.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Could I recommend on the seventh of January, we do have facilities, we do have finance HR. We've done parathon meeting days in the past. Finance HR will be done at six. From six, we can transition over here by six thirty. Most board members are now in the central office area and already engaged. Perhaps we could host it that evening and just be a continuance, January seventh at high school.
With hearing that, Board member Smith, would you put that into your recommendation into a motion this? If you, if you would like to revert from six, I would gladly give it all nine hours. So Linda, if you have something you'd like to share, please?
We're pushing it out to January. To me, it feels like it's going to be a rush thing. I mean, I don't know if going to January, because we're already looking January, February, we're going to take action and go. Is that enough time? I mean, are we ready to make that decision? To me, I would like to do like maybe the December eleven timeframe and maybe we might not have all the answers, but at least we're going to be able to listen to what the community has to say. But that's just my opinion. I didn't know if bringing it, pushing it into January is going to have us with a rush decision.
That's why I was asking for all the board members' opinion and discussion on this. And to you from Dr. Sample and Mr. Dasher to make sure we're having quality information to provide for community questions to be answered properly.
Either works for me. I just don't want to be rushed in making a decision. That's it. I mean, if it's January, that works to be right, it's perfect. If not, then you're going to have to extend all that timeline.
More information in January and it's pushing it out, it's not going to condense it, rush it, forget it.
Mr. Smith?
I recommend a motion to schedule the community question and answer session on January seventh at six thirty PM to be held at Merrill Senior High School Auditorium.
We have motion by Board member Smith, seconded by Board member Volpik. Do we have any discussion or clarification on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote for a question and answer session as put in the notes for January seventh, six thirty PM start time here at the Merrill High School. I believe the auditorium was recommended, if available. We will communicate that through the central office, through Dr. Sample. And getting the thumbs up by Director of Buildings and Grounds, so handling with securing that. Next, we have under the board agenda for this evening, technical corrections made to a series of policies. Thirty-one twenty-one, forty-one twenty-one, thirty-one twenty-two point zero one, forty-one twenty-two point zero one, thirty-one twenty-two point zero two, forty-one twenty-two point zero two, and sixty-two thirty-five. As you may or may not be aware, bylaw zero-one three-one point one authorizes the superintendent to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through formal rulemaking procedures. In this case, through the guidance and review process of the finance HR committee that convened on November sixth. Some items of technical correction and consistency were brought up by either Dr. Sample, superintendent, or members of that committee. And this is a, for the board's information, that technical corrections will be made to the aforementioned policies. Any questions on any of those, most of which were for technical consistency within our policies? Seeing no hands or hearing no questions, the next item on our agenda is a letter of support for the application for the Wisconsin FabLab grant funding. I had drafted an attached letter of support to send with an application for the Wisconsin FabLab grant funding. I wanted everyone to review that to make sure that the team to, on behalf of the board, and can you guys work with me to put together communications like this? I wanted transparency and everyone to see that first before I indicate the board's intentions and me to sign that on our behalf. Is a recommended motion? Do I have that motion? Paul?
Hope to allow President Blake to send out the letter of support along with the passage of FabLab grant application.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Jeremy. I do know that the board members willing to do that, so motion on the floor to make sure, tell me your recorder has that, was to allow myself, President Blake, to send out the letter of support along with the Wisconsin FabLab grant application on behalf of the Board of Education. Is there any questions on that particular motion and this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is in fact the consent agenda. And at this time, I would ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda? I in fact have something that I would like pulled. I would like on the personnel report to be pulled for discussion separate. I need to be motioned to be pulled or just stated to be pulled, and we'll do that first. Just for transparency, I'd like to pull that out and within the personnel report, as would be read, the specific line in reference to Kobe Blake as Merrill High School boys basketball assistant JV coach. I'd like that pulled so we could vote on that separately. If we could, if we could have a motion on that separately to be voted on. We have a motion by Maria, hopefully, seconded by Paul, approved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? I would abstain from that vote. I do not have any other hands up for anyone else asking to pull anything from the consent agenda. This time I would hope for a motion of the consent agenda. Would you, uh, let me?
Me, my, my mouth. Right? Where does it start? Yeah, okay. Motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda, items A through E, which includes second reading of policy TBD, rights responsibilities of the Board separate to parents guardians and parents guardians, not chair of same household. Then October twenty-three, twenty nineteen, meeting claims vouchers receipts totaling three million, forty-three thousand, three dollars, thirty-four cents. Personnel report, which includes hearing of Annette Dukey, early childhood aid, special education, effective December ten, twenty nineteen, following linked to term seasonal or rank employees. Roger Pokes, PRMS boys basketball coach, Cody Donther, PRMS boys basketball coach, Jacob Shallow, MHS boys basketball varsity head coach. Thomas Curry, MHS boys basketball varsity, varsity assistant coach, Jay Peterson, Merrill High School boys basketball varsity assistant coach, Brian Kwasny, Merrill High School boys basketball JV head coach, Nathaniel Greifey. Merrill High School boys basketball head JV two coach, Lisa Hanlon, Prairie River boys basketball coach, Jacob Shallow, Prairie Middle School boys basketball middle school head in Merrill. Thomas Curry, Prairie Middle School boys basketball middle school assistant in Merrill. Jay Peterson, Prairie River boys, Prairie River Middle School boys basketball middle school assistant in Merrill. Brian Kwasny, Prairie Middle School basketball middle, middle school assistant in Merrill. Jolene Waits, Merrill High School girls basketball head varsity coach. Matthew Schultz, Merrill High School girls basketball assistant varsity coach. Adam Smith, Merrill High School girls basketball assistant varsity coach. Orangely, Merrill High School girls basketball JV two coach. Eric Losi, MHS girls basketball JV two assistant coach, Bell Leland, MHS girls basketball JV two assistant coach. Erin Greifey, Prairie Middle School girls basketball coach. Christopher Han, Prairie Middle School girls basketball coach. John Buzire, Prairie Middle School girls basketball coach. Alex Stenzel, Prairie River girls, Prairie River girls basketball coach. Lisa Hanlon, Prairie Middle School girls basketball head in Merrill. Patience Hyen, PRMS girls basketball head in Merrill. Adam Smith, PRMS girls basketball head in Merrill. Molly Stenzel, PRMS girls basketball head in Merrill. Christopher Han, PRMS girls basketball assistant in Merrill. Jolene Waits, Prairie, Prairie RMAS girls basketball assistant in Merrill. Chris Marlowe, there's something E in that, by the way. Girl High School head hockey coach, Tim Wager, Merrill High School assistant hockey coach. Brian Suaki, MHS head wrestling coach. Jerry Mullenberg, Merrill High School assistant wrestling coach. Benjamin Metzke, sorry. Merrill High School assistant wrestling coach, Scott Arneson, Merrill High School assistant wrestling coach, Eric Ball, Merrill High School assistant wrestling coach. Jared Seer, Merrill High School assistant wrestling coach, fifty percent. Ryan Martinovich, Merrill High School assistant coach, fifty percent. Steve Schenk, Prairie Middle School's head wrestling coach. Logan Figueroa, PRMS assistant wrestling coach. Nathan Meyer, PRMS assistant wrestling coach. Brian Suaki, PRMS wrestling head in Merrill. Eric Ball, PRMS wrestling, wrestling assistant in Merrill. Jared Seer, Prairie Middle School wrestling assistant in Merrill. Benjamin Metzke, PRMS wrestling assistant in Merrill. Logan Figueroa, PRMS wrestling assistant in Merrill. Jerry Mullenberg, PRMS wrestling assistant in Merrill. Steve Schenk, PRMS wrestling assistant in Merrill. Jeff DePiz, PRMS wrestling assistant in Merrill. And then you've got Kobe Blake. And Gina Crowsey, Special Olympics bowling coach. Trina Palwicky, Special Olympics bowling coach. Gina Crowsey, Special Olympics ski, snowshoe coach. Katie Ellison, Special Olympics coach coordinator. And Adam Smith, Special Olympics coach. And that's been at least donations totaling one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and forty-four cents.
So prior to asking for a second from Mr. Raddler's motion, I believe we would need that amended. If you want A through E, which technically part of the D was, was pulled. I would encourage the amendment to stay from Mr. Raddler's standing, just to stay what was pulled. If you could just do a friendly amendment on that, reminded in the, you had, you had stated.
So a friendly, friendly amendment to Kobe Blake? Oh, okay. So friendly amendment to remove section D to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Sure.
Can we have a second to that motion? Seconded by Maria. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Abstention by Brett, as noted. Next on the agenda and for clarification, I will send out an email guidance document on items for future meetings and possible action to approve the future discussions thereof. Just as a quick reminder that within timeframes for posting of both future board meetings as well as committee meetings, send myself or Dr. Sample. If board members, any items you would like on the next board meeting? As you know, a week prior, we do send that out, a week and a half to two weeks prior, we are already working on that next agenda. And I would say that is a fair timeframe for when we work also on our key agendas with a week plus notice for the chairs of each given committee. We do have attached on there for our board notes, running list of requested items that we're continuing to follow along. Dr. Sample and myself as we put together agendas at the board level and make sure that all chairs of the committees have that data as well as do all board members. The next item on the agenda is the board decision financial impact summary. An attached document was supplied. We started as a tradition years ago at a board member's request and used to standing item agenda, agenda item that states what our impact of a particular decision is on the finances of the district. Also a reminder, next on the agenda is the radio schedule to, I believe it's tomorrow morning, eight fifteen AM, Blue Jay seven thirty. Radio station Dr. Sample and myself will be on there reviewing tonight's board meeting. Next item on the agenda is a recap of upcoming or future meetings. Facilities committee meeting will next meet on Wednesday, December fourth, twenty nineteen, at three thirty PM in the boardroom. Finance HR committee's next meeting is immediately following. Facilities on Wednesday, December fourth, twenty nineteen, at four thirty PM in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board meeting is Monday, December ninth, twenty nineteen, at six thirty PM, starting out at Maple Grove. Pine River School for Young Learners Policy Council meeting is Tuesday, December tenth, twenty nineteen, beginning at five thirty PM on Pine River School for Young Learners. The Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is Wednesday, Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee meeting is Wednesday, December eleventh, twenty nineteen, at four thirty PM in the boardroom. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, at five thirty PM in the boardroom as well. And any future meetings after that, we will discuss and we will have posted accordingly. Next, on the agenda is a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five for N one, for NC, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility for NF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where a pair of B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigation. The purpose of the closed session is to discuss the non-annual philosophy and the specific historical references in order to create an effective understanding of the process. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Maria, seconded by Paul. Do we have a roll call on that, please, Tammy?
Linda Yingling, aye.
Doug Safford.
Aye.
Paul Crew.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Jeremy Rattle.
Aye.
Jonathan.
Aye.
Kristy Downward.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. At this time, we will take a fifteen-minute recess, and based on being closed session, we will relocate back to the MAPS Central Administration Building. And also, to be noted, that we have no items at this time where we were contemplating moving back into open session, but approximately eight thirty-three PM, the board will reconvene in closed session